Hello?
All right, I think we have most, most everybody back at this point, so. Madeline, I apologize, we'll let you know your turn to speak. We are going to move on to that topic right now, but before we do that, we're going to make sure everybody's on board on what exactly we're discussing. Madeline was a public speaker a few weeks ago.
Right.
And, you know, everyone knows recently we installed some meters in the 200 and 300 blocks of North Ninth Street. And Madeline gave us an overview of how that's impacted her neighborhood. Madeline, we'll let you start and give us a brief recap of that again. If you, if you could keep it pretty succinct, that would be helpful. And then we do have members of the parking authority to listen as well. So Madeline, give you two minutes to try to cover that.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening, everyone.
How long for the coins, then?
David, can you mute yourself, please?
I'm muted.
What?
Well, the last time I came, I attended a council meeting, I explained how matters between individuals within my neighborhood have gotten worse since the parking meters have been installed. More people are starting to get tickets and violations because we can't afford to pay a meter every few hours to park where we live. Parking is more scarce than it was previously because not only do we have these parking meters, we also have two-hour limits, no parking this side, no parking that side, things like that. So it just made parking really difficult to find. And in most cases, a lot of individuals have to park three or four blocks away at the end of the day and then walk home. People are starting to get into gunfights and verbal arguments and physical arguments over parking spots and such. And we've experienced certain members of parking authorities, certain officers, just being downright rude and just harassing people. And we would like for the meters to be removed.
All right, Madeline, and that's what we heard from you and the fact that these were recently installed. We don't want to react to complaints, but we wanted to give you the opportunity to hear from the authority. You know, they always have another side of the story as well. So we have with us this evening the director of the parking authority, Mr. Matt, and I'll turn it over to Nathan to add his comments and his thoughts.
Sure, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so first, in terms of our officers being rude, that's completely unacceptable. And we hold our officers to a higher standard. And if, if everybody saw, there was just, one of our officers was just on Facebook as a resident filmed him issuing a boot to a vehicle. And he was explaining to the resident what, educating them as to why he was doing it, that the person had 19 outstanding violations. And he did an excellent job keeping calm and explaining to people and doing his job. And, and that, that is what we expect, that is what I demand of our officers. So if, if there are any specific instances where our officers are unprofessional, that's something that you should bring to our HR department and we can definitely deal with that. And we do have people that bring in video and things like that, and we definitely handle them internally. And that's why we have an HR department. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And in terms of parking, you know, parking across the city is a problem. We've known that and it's not something we're going to fix overnight. You know, let's just take a step back and look at why a couple of months ago collectively city council decided to install meters there. If you remember, there is, North Ninth Street is double parking alley. Anytime you drive up North Ninth Street, you slalom between all the double parked cars. And if you look at what is the reason for double parking, there are several reasons. And don't just take my word for it, look at the Desmond study that is coming out. And, you know, they presented their preliminary findings last week. And one of the things you're, you're going to see and that they talked about is that there is a lack of deterrent for people double parking. So double parking was one of the major reasons that we decided that there were meters necessary in the block. The, the problem with the blocks is that you're talking about zoning in a commercial neighborhood. So you have commercial businesses on first floors, then second and third floors of these buildings, you have residential units. And it's in these mixed-use areas where we have the major conflict between business and residents, both demanding parking. And, you know, one of the things that we've received a lot of, which led us to start looking at this initially last year, was complaints from business owners who said that they had no turnover, there was no parking in these blocks for their customers. And what we found is that the majority of it was because residents in the block would park there and not move their car. And then so people that would want to frequent and patronize businesses would double park in the middle of the street and which causes public safety issues. So those are kind of some of the key points in terms of why it was initially decided to put the meters in. We have dealt with only one person, we only have one documented person that has called in here to complain from the 300 block of North Ninth Street. And when she is called in, she is called in, we have it documented three times that we have spoken with her. And we were eventually able to help her get a residential permit in one of, in our closest parking garage. So she is currently parking off-street for $39 a month in a guaranteed spot. And so we have been working with anybody that's called in to complain. We've also sent out staff that have gone to every single business and documented their complaints and their issues. And so I, I think, you know, we have tried to do what we can short of establishing more parking in those areas. We are currently trying to purchase a lot that would yield 40 additional off-street parking spaces, one block from the 300 block of North Ninth Street. We have been negotiating for that space and we will continue to do so. Because under our CPR program, our citywide parking relief program, we agree with the complaints that you're hearing from Ms. Felix that parking is a problem. And, you know, this parking being a problem didn't just start because meters were put in. It's always been a problem. And I really think the only way to truly solve this is to create more off-street parking, as Desmond's study is showing. And I, I don't think this is something we're just going to fix overnight. But that, that's kind of, oh, the one other thing she spoke about was the total number of violations. And I have a printout here about the total number of violations for double parking, for loading zones and for meters. Those are the three that I selected because that's kind of what we changed. We changed loading zones, we changed the meters. And one of the root causes was the double parking. So if you look at the total number of double parking violations issued, the average, and this is sad, right? This is something I do not like to report because it's really sad that we've only issued this many double parking violations. But we have averaged five per month in the 200 block of North Ninth Street. And in the 300 block of North Ninth Street, we've averaged 1.5 per month. That's how many violations we have issued for those, for double parking. And that is between January and July 24th of this year. In terms of loading zones, because we've also issued loading zone violations in the 200 and 300 block of North Ninth Street. And that went into effect on March 1st, when we started to bill for loading zones. In January and February this year, prior to that implement, we issued an average of 40 violations for loading zones in those two blocks. After the implementation of the billing, the average went up to 65 violations in those two blocks. So there was about a 20, a 20-ticket increase for those loading zones. And in terms of meters, so prior to June, there were no meter violations issued. In the months of June and July, there was a total of 70-meter violations issued in the 200 block and 62-meter violations issued in the 300 block of North Ninth Street. So in terms of overall, looking at the data of the number of violations issued, it's actually really sad, especially when it comes to double parking, that we're not doing more in those areas, given how many double parkers there are in that area. And, you know, that goes into enforcement, right? When I started down here, we had eight full-time enforcement officers. We now have 19. And even with 19 full-time enforcement officers, we can never truly affect the public safety issues. And one of the things you're, you know, council has talked about many times is the dangerous intersections. And that's something we're, we're working on and we're doing beta programs on, is trying to figure out how to fix these issues. So I, I don't want to get off on that unless you want me to. But that's kind of my response to what Ms. Felix had to say. Are there any questions from council? Sure.
Yeah, Melissa?
Um, so a lot of people don't know about nearby parks, their rates, hours, and residential permits. Can you let like the public know about that, like the hours that they can use that, like for her, that she lives on that? Or we just installed the meters?
Sure, and, and thank you for bringing that up. I, I completely forgot the one thing that we've talked about and we are in continued discussions with council about reworking the residential parking program for on-street. And it's a, it's a bear to tackle because it's really big and complicated. But one of the things the residents in the 200 and 300 block of North Ninth Street can do, and I would encourage Ms. Felix to do this, is get a petition together with your neighbors and follow the ordinance. Come down here, you can get the petition and you get enough signatures and you can get a residential permit for your block. Basically, what that would do is it allows business owners to still have business parking during business hours, which is eight. Typically, it's 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Then after that, it's pretty much reserved for residents in that area, in that block. There's a couple of little exceptions here and there, but if Ms. Felix wants to come down, she can meet with us and we can explain that program. And there's many of those programs all over the city. And, and that would be a good solution or a good next step, I think, for her or for the residents in that block. Ms. Ventura, to get back to your question, on our Redding Parking website, it has a list of all the locations that we have, all of the rates. And you can clearly see there's a great reduction for residents versus regular commercial customers. That that is all on our website and accessible to anybody. I, I think, did that answer your question?
No.
Yes.
All right, council members, additional comments, questions, any thoughts, Lucy?
Yeah, hi Nathan, thanks for coming in tonight. I think it's a really important topic to always be able to discuss for our city. First question, the lot that you mentioned potentially that the parking authority might be purchasing.
Any questions?
Is, is that for potential increased residential parking? Or is that potential commercial parking for owner?
Why do we have to?
It's really hard to hear. I'm not sure if somebody's unmuted. But I, I think you were asking about this lot that we're looking at within a block of the 300 block of North Ninth Street, if it's for residential only or if it's for mixed use. I had a conversation earlier today with Desmond Parking, the group that is doing the, the, the parking study for the entire city. And, and what they are recommending for all of these purchases that we're doing under this CPR program is that we offer residential parking, that we offer commercial parking, and that we offer meter parking in all of our purchased lots. So they are strongly recommending that we do all three and that we don't just make it residential.
Okay, and second question is that because you've spoken even tonight, there is the opportunity for residents to purchase a monthly parking pass for garages that might make sense. Do you have any idea on where the capacity is of people taking, you know, using that space? Are there a lot of spaces open that people are not taking advantage of or?
Yeah, so Desmond, in their study that they presented last week, showed that, you know, just in the last couple of months, we are at, on average, a 25% occupancy in all of our structures. So those are our structures downtown. At 25% occupancy, we can still park at least 4,500 people on a typical day in, in our garages. And so we are nowhere near capacity in our garages. Now, our surface lots, on the other hand, for example, the surface lot we have in the 1000 block of Penn Street, we have a waiting list, so that's a 60-car lot. We have a waiting list of over 20 people who have signed up waiting to get in there because of the demand. And, you know, that's why we're looking at other lots on Penn Street, for example, in the 900 block, because we have people that come to us all the time and say, hey, can you get a, you know, a parking lot in this area? We had one just the other day on Spruce Street down near the 500 block. And he came to us and, and he's asking for five off-street parking spaces. And he's a business. So we have a lot of communications with a lot of people asking us to purchase lots. I was just out for three hours this afternoon looking at eight additional lots. Some of them are on the repository list for potential sites to continue to expand and develop and try to start fixing some of the parking problems.
Okay, Marcia?
The last piece of that is the, I, I think with quick math, it sounds like it would cost somebody about $500 a year to be able to park in a garage. Is that the same rate as a lot?
500 a year?
So in, like, for example, the closest lot to the 300 block of North Ninth Street currently is Popular and Walnut Garage. That is $39 a month. So that, that is over 50% reduced compared to the commercial price. The commercial price in there is $87 a month. Some of the lots, we've had to adjust the, the price up a little higher because of the demand, because the demand is so high. And that's, that's typically down in the Penn, in the Penn Street area.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Go ahead, Marcia.
And I just wanted to be respectful. I think that Madeline may want to speak just so that she understands that we're, as council, being questions. There will be a time to come back there.
Right.
Okay. And one of the things that I note is human behavior. Is that human behavior, when you get home at the end of the day, you're going to look for the most quickest available parking space you can find. And you'll find it, and you may even want to take the risk, even though you know in the back of your head, you may end up getting a ticket. You may want to take that risk just because you're looking and you're tired and you're looking for available parking. So I think we need to take that human factor into all this discussion. It's not a matter of if we set up a lot and I want a tight budget, I'm not going to spend $500 a year to park in a parking lot for a couple of blocks, even if I avoid making tickets. One suggestion I have with this is, and I know it's hard to have community meetings now because we're still coming out of the COVID restrictions, but I think it'd be very beneficial to have community meetings where the residents actually have a chance to dialogue about this and look at the pros and the cons and hear from them what works best rather than dealing with each person on an individual basis. And I guess what's just, this now. So I don't know whether you feel that would be workable.
I mean, a town hall, they don't want to have to pay for the meter, period.
Right.
So having a town hall discussion, we're not, if we're not going to remove the meters, then it's not going to satisfy me.
So, so just.
So if we're going to add a parking lot that's maybe a block away, if that would be convenient, if that were to happen. I'm not saying that it is, I'm just saying.
Let's stay away from the what is for a second because I, I think the doc is, well, no, Nathan can sit down with Madeline and talk about the permanent parking. Now, I didn't know we crossed that over with meters, but now it does make sense. So I think that's a solution they could at least talk about today, within reasonable costs, I believe.
Well, how many signatures?
$35 a year. Nathan will go over that with her. He can say that now as well. Let me give Donna her turn and then we'll be back.
Really more of a comment than a question.
And Council President, can I quick comment to Marcia if that's okay?
Yeah.
So just, you, you know, in terms of town hall meetings and things like that, the best thing residents and anybody can do right now is go to the public website that Desmond Parking is putting up. And they are opening up a website where anybody in the city, a resident, a commercial business owner, can get onto that website and leave their comments. And they're going to tally all of those comments and they're going to include that in their presentation. So I would strongly encourage Ms. Felix to do that and to get other residents in the area to do that as well. So that'll help with their comprehensive look at this and other residential parking issues. Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is really more of a comment, but going to Mrs. Point, I think, and to many of our points. The irony here is that in probably the more, one of the more distressed areas of the city, where it's hard to afford a lot of extra things, people have to pay for parking. Whereas in other areas of the city where it's not as distressed, parking is free. I, to me, it's, it's lopsided. And, I mean, I can go home and I might have to park up a block away with that. And then for folks in this particular area, to add this on top of everything else that you're paying for and that they, you know, try and make ends meet, it's just, it just seems backwards. Like other areas where super rich people live downtown in Manhattan or something like that, or Washington City. It's, I don't know how, how it fits it other than more lots that people are either, because the residents that have a permit that I aren't charged, there's somebody way to pay for it, or completely disturbed, terribly discounted amount that people kind of pay for. Just backwards.
So.
I also wonder though, I mean, we have zoning issues, right? So when these rental units are coming up, they're required to have, excellent, right?
So many are older.
Right, that's one. Also, I don't know if there's incentive-based programs that we can offer homeowners to add maybe a carport in the back, I don't know if that's feasible. And also, there's the other issue of there being multiple vehicles in one house, right? So there's, that's what, you know, I hear you, you know, as far as town hall meeting, like how effective would it be? But our residents need to provide solutions to these problems because there's a multitude of, right? So we're doing what we can, working with what we have to try to tackle the majority of these issues. So there's another element, right? It's like, what do we do about multiple vehicles in one house? How do you handle that?
Well, so we're getting done, so Madeline, I think Nathan explained very well that there's a lot of business issues and double parking issues. Many of us, I've found, to, to, over time, there's a lot of double parking. Let, let's work within the, the compounds of the options that are available to us. I'm going to ask Madeline if she'll get in touch with Nathan and can find out if the permanent parking solution would be something that might help. It's not going to solve all the problems, you know, not everybody works during the day. Some people work at night, need to park during the day. We can't continue to allow double parking to go on. Most of the people that, they were very good people. There are some people using the zoning, a lot of illegal, you know, single-room rentals and things like that. And, and there's so many side streets that have parking. So the parking issue, forgetting the multi-unit issue is already an issue to start. So it, it's just a problem of too many cars in certain parts of the city where the density is just so, so tight. Yet at the same time, you want to support the business community as well. So is that something you'd be willing to do, is sit down as a starting point with Nathan? Talk about the permanent parking process, is that something you would be willing to do?
Good. He's asking something that we're willing to do to speak about the permit process.
Yeah, the permit process, that's what I was just talking about, like, we shouldn't have to walk so far. You know, it's, this is a really dangerous neighborhood to walk that far.
I don't know who's talking, but Madeline, if you could just speak, is that something you're willing to do?
Yes.
That's, that's my husband Jimmy, I apologize, that's my husband Jimmy, he wanted to speak to y'all also.
That's no problem, though. So do me a favor tomorrow, reach out to Linda again. Or Linda, reach out to her and we'll get you Nathan tomorrow, okay?
That's fine.
We appreciate your time. Nathan, thank you as well. And we're going to move on. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have Maria Rodriguez, she's going to speak to us about the fire escrow audit. Giving us an update on the status of that audit.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you, Council President. The city, the city auditor office was able to complete during the May, during the month of May, an order was completed by the fire escrow account, for the fire escrow account from January 1st, 2023, December 31, 2020. Part of this order was also to reconcile fire escrow cash advertisements. The data needed for this order was provided by the treasury manager who is responsible to maintain a lot with all the necessary information for each property of which the proceeds are received. This proceeds are received from the fire escrow insurance and it has been historically deposited into the fire escrow account on the Form 31, which are used as a security against the local cause of removing, repair, or secured in the building. The data we see was, has been reviewed and analyzed by the city auditor, which is, which tied to the trial volumes obtained by the, by the city controller. The liability and the ending balance of the fire escrow account was on December 31, 2020, is $766,833.44. In the order provided to all council members and the administration, you can see the one detail. The majority of the proceeds received within the years 2013, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 have not been dispersed. And this has originated significantly increased to the liability. See fire escrow liability aging for year, see table number two below. Though a total of $105,440 was dispersed during the fiscal year 2020, the city still had greater liability by $36,936, $76,433 compared to the 2019 liability. This liability, liability has been showing the details, the name of the owners, the parcel number, the address of the property and the date amount of when these proceeds were received. Also, the total liability that the city has, also December 31, 2020. Also, just want to make emphasis that when I did the order in 2024... Uh, also just want to uh, make emphasis that when I did the order in two thousand twenty-four, like for ten years, we, we can see that more uh, the city had reimbursed during two thousand twenty more money than previous years. And I believe that's because all the data was made public. I, I think that's, that was a good thing to do. I made with that, the city auditor made with the administration and we agreed that should be put in place in order for this liability, to reduce this liability. I asked the financial director to give me a response in the audit and Jamar, you have anything that you can add it into your response? So you can talk to, so make council aware of what you respond is, we got it to this liability.
Oh, thank you, Maria. I stand by my written response.
And Jamar and uh, Maria, wanted to, do you want to just walk through the body exactly what the fire escrow account is and how it's funded? And what this backlog means? Does somebody want to?
This liability has gone on for years since two thousand, by checking all the data back from two thousand ninety-four. And every year the liability has been increased. Um, the treasury department is doing a good job so far. They, anytime that they receive any money for the insurance for uh, they send a letter to the homeowner and make sure that they know that the city, that money that doesn't belong to the city belongs to them. But the house has to be fixed before the city release uh, the money. Uh, some property that's.
So, so, so a fire happens, we collect revenues from the insurance company. We, we hold them until the properties are improved or repaired or demolished. And at that point, then they're paid out to the proper owner of the property. We have a backlog of funds that haven't been paid out. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. So at the time of the fire, the insurance company will pay out eighty-five percent of what's been held in escrow and the city receives fifteen percent to hold until the property's been remediated, certified as fixed, and then we release the remaining funds. Um, currently, property owners are receiving the eighty-five percent, not worrying about the fifteen percent. And that um, is remaining as a liability on our books.
And I, I just want to say that a lot of property has been sold. Let's say maybe uh, they didn't want to fix it. They took whatever money the insurance gave it to them, like the percentage that Jamar just mentioned it. And they just saw the property and maybe those people, they, they might not be here already. We don't know.
Yeah, but I've been certain a lot of that is going on. Jamar, what's the typical state guidelines as far as disposition of those funds? If we went through and let's just say it's a hundred properties, we found out that eighty of them no longer are even tied to the ownership, what would be the disposition of those funds? Uh, would they be retained by the city? Do they need to be sent to the state? How is it?
So the um, current ordinance requires the trades office to certify that the remediation work is done. So um, we would, my recommendation says, um, and it's been confirmed by the law department, that we would need the legal authority of council to waive the requirement to enforce that provision. We would then be able to create an amnesty program, create a window that homeowners can petition the city to release the funds uh, currently held in escrow. At the end of that amnesty period, then we would be able um, to send that liability back to the revenue department uh, as unclaimed property, um, Council President, and that would remove it from our books.
Okay, so is there going to be a formal resolution or ordinance coming forward for us to make that decision?
Um, if it's the will of the body and the administration, yes, I can prepare that.
Yeah, I mean, we can't keep holding on to money that isn't ours. Um, obviously it's a lot of money. And secondly, to go out and inspect all these properties right now. Uh, the irony is, we, we may have demoed some of these properties along the way. I mean, I just want to make sure that we do our check and balance to make sure that the city hasn't incurred expenses. And in the meantime, we've got fifteen thousand dollars sitting in an escrow account. So I think you have to make sure you're not, that's supposed to be teased.
We, we.
Give us that.
We can um, clean it up to account for properties that have municipal liens, a sizable municipal lien. Um, and, and, and go after those, so to speak, lack of a better term.
That would cover it, yeah, yeah.
And, and then the remaining, I would say, we go through the process I, I previously outlined.
Okay, that makes sense. Maria, thank you for the update. Council members' questions?
Thank you.
We'll go to Johi first and then.
Were you first, Marsha? No, you were first, sure, okay. I, I would like to know what efforts we've made on behalf of the city to reach out to these property owners. And granted, I know some properties have been sold, but we have a database, right? So it have, we run these names through our database, for example, to identify if people are still around.
We've sent a.
Since they backed, sorry, since they backed, backed to prior six thousand and ten, I mean, it's been numerous years. I'm just wondering if we have a lot of our efforts.
Yes, absolutely. So we sent notification to all of the property owners um, during the two thousand nineteen calendar year. Um, and that is how we were able to remove some of the liability during the two thousand twenty calendar year. Um, because those property owners became aware. Um, there are others that we are beyond our ability, um, our limited ability to reach out to them. Uh, so that is why with this um, dispensation from council, we would then be able to put an ad in the Reading Eagle and list all of the properties, pretty much what we have here in the uh, public meeting document, we will be able to put that in the newspaper. Um, and that'll extend the reach of people that are aware and can then reach out to us um, of their own volition to seek the escrow proceeds.
And one last question. And then if you identify property owners um, that have, you mentioned something about lien. So would this part in a lien, would this come towards a?
We would.
Sack lien or what have you?
We would be able to deduct the lien from uh, the escrow proceeds currently held before being. Absolutely.
Marsha?
Yeah, and I want to go back to when we originally enacted this ordinance. The goal was to rather than have people take all the insurance money, was to make sure the properties were attended to and that they weren't left to rot. And I'm wondering how successful this ordinance has been because if people are taking the majority of the money, possibly not using it to rehabilitate the properties, not caring about the rest and just walking away. Is this ordinance really going to uh, reach the effectiveness that we originally wanted it to? And is there another way of maybe need to rework this with some of the suggested revisions? Because I want to make sure, we don't want to see properties that have suffered from fire loss. They are the real detriment to neighborhoods. And I've seen so many of those uh, in my districts where people just are walking away from them. We know they, they have no use for them anymore, but you know, they're talking it, uh, at least.
In some cases, in many cases, they don't have insurance. Well, that's, that's true too.
So I would, I would say, Count, um, Counselor Goodman-Henderson, the current process is working. Um, as Maria uh, alluded in her report details, and thank you very much, Maria, because you've been working on this for more than a year. Um, it's, it's, it's an aging list. It's an age list. So this is um, accounts from as far back, I think she mentioned nineteen ninety-four.
Something like that, yep.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really old accounts that predate everyone, um, just about currently working in treasury. Um, that's why the intended effort is to create an amnesty program. We can let everybody come in. We waive the rules just for a short period of time. Um, and then we're able to write it off because we've uh, made every good faith attempt to reach out to those homeowners. Even if the property is sold or whatever.
Yeah, just, Jamar, just, just, I understand that those, how many properties are you talking about? You got a hundred?
It's, it's quite a few dozen. I don't have a specific number for you. Maria, do you have a specific account?
I don't have the total of the property, but it's, they're, they're all listed in the prior escrow liability and this spreadsheet that I just attached, attached it to the uh, to the audit report.
Okay, so from, from the insurance laws, I don't know all this, the state property insurance laws. But um, if, if, if we, if we had fifteen thousand dollars retained for someone's property and they and let's just say they have that in the property. Are we allowed to use those dollars to facilitate the improvement of those properties or no?
I'll have to defer to Fred on that one. There's very narrow confines um, on which we could do that, which is kind of why I've favored the approach I outlined for you. But Fred um, can speak much more intelligently um, on, on what you specifically just.
Yeah, for a lot of them, there's, you know, documentation issues. We don't have um, any, any evidence that we've actually reached, actually at the time of the loss, let the insureds know. So for those properties, we're really not in a, a strong legal position to do that. For the more recent properties, you know, with uh, between Jamar and Trent Holston and, and treasuries that provided us with some stability where we're doing the right thing uh, and getting the notice out. And to the extent that there's uh, you know, not a claim, we can put some uh, put some of that money to good use. But that's more for the recent ones and we're doing a lot better in terms of getting them uh, claimed, so.
All right, thanks, thanks, Fred. Um, so Jamar, I would be more inclined to this amnesty window saying, you know, you still have these dollars available to improve for you, if you still own it and you still want to use it to improve it. That would be okay. Um, to just give people a check, five years out, they never fixed the property. I'd rather just see it, I'd rather see them put it in the property or we send it to the state. Um, I'm not, I don't know if that's going to make a difference in the bucket or not, but that would be my preference.
I need to look at the report again. I believe um, I had initially said uh, from two thousand twelve and back. Um, as like a cutoff year, I have to double check that. But I could get you uh, an ordinance within um, the next two weeks before the next legislative meeting. That would um, do what we, what we've been talking about this evening.
All right, let's do that and then we'll have a chance to discuss it a little further. Is everyone okay with that? All right, let us know if any of us have any.
You know.
Um, yeah, because uh, ideally that period would run through the end of this year. Um, and that way we could see it out to be sent to unclaimed property at the beginning of next year.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot, about seventy-three property. Yes.
How many? Hundred and three?
Hundred and three?
Seventy-three, seven-three.
Seventy-three, okay, thank you. All right, thank you for the report, Maria. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Brad and Jamar, um, we're going to move on to agenda review. Um, if everyone's okay with that. Uh, first item on our agenda this evening, we're going to have the indication from Crystal Tapia, uh, from Feet on the Street, Youth Ministry. Um, we do have confirmation this evening, commendation, I'm sorry. Ignoring Urban Agricultural Week, accepted by the Brooks Conservation District. Lucine, are you going to read it? All right, and then Linda, do we have anybody scheduled for public comment?
We have one gentleman on agenda, a non-agent matters who's going to call in.
That's it.
Yes.
We're asked on it to read the public guidelines. Under our, and in minutes, we have our consent agenda items. The first items, a resolution authorizing the managing director to sign and submit the attached traffic signal maintenance agreement to submit future modifications to the attached traffic signal maintenance agreement. And to submit future applications for traffic signal approval. Is that duplicated or? Submit future, okay. That gives the ability to submit future modifications to it and then submit future applications, okay? Any comments or questions, that specific resolution, this gives the managing director the opportunity to uh, sign the maintenance agreement and uh, make any future modifications would pend out. Are you all right with that? All right. The next item is a word contract for the Angelica Park ADA improvements project to Columbia, at the end of Pennsylvania in the amount uh, one hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. Who can give us a rundown on this specific project? Um, Stan, do you have any input on this one?
Uh, yes, I do. Thank you, Council President. Um, everybody has seen this uh, come from fruition back in the middle of uh, two thousand eighteen. Um, this is a very key project for us. The um, ADA compliance is um, is, I'm talking with administration and our managing director, it's, it's a focus of ours and this is to provide ADA compliance and accessibility within Angelica. When it was built originally, it didn't need to have that component. But we are doing that and we have received some grants. We are undertaking this as well through our CIP with Jamar's help. And um, it's a very, very critical um, project we're getting done.
Okay, Stan, thank you. Any comments?
Yeah, hey Stan, it's Lucine. Um.
Hi, Lucine.
Hey, what is the uh, schedule and how does it align with the current upgrades that Burke's Nature is doing at the same time?
They're, um, we're working with um, Christine from CEG. And there is supposed to be a strong coordination between both uh, groups. Um, this is the award of contract. It has gone through by legal, so I just, I would like to give a notice to proceed uh, as soon as possible after we do find out where Burke's Nature is as well. I know there has been some conversation. I don't know the full extent of what they're doing, but I know there was supposed to be some outreach between uh, both organizations. I will confirm for you.
Yeah, keep an eye on that only because I know both the Burke's Nature and Alberta's sessions are going to open at the end of August. And if we're doing major work there, which has been tremendous in the, toward, I have to tell you. Um, with all the ADA work that's happened, um, we're just trying to look ahead here and make sure that doesn't all occur at the same time.
Understood.
So it helps all, yeah, thank you.
Right, any additional comments on that award of contract? All right, if not, uh, we'll move on to the next item. It's an award of contract for the Pagoda Access Modifications Project to close the Pagoda parking lot to vehicular traffic during nighttime hours and maintain two-way traffic on Skyline Drive to Barwess Construction in Birdsboro, PA. The amount of one hundred sixty thousand three hundred forty-four dollars. Stan, did you want to give an overview of how this uh, contract will be deployed?
Yes, sir. Um, we, we have um, I'm pretty happy, number one, this came underneath, well under engineering estimates. So we're very pleased with that. Number two is Barwess Construction, a local contractor is very, is very happy to work for this and understands the situation as well up at the Pagoda and, and want to give a helping hand. Um, the work will take place after the um, the next, with Duray Drive um, race. So that we're not going to affect their work either. So this is just part of the improvements. This is essentially the first of the improvements where we in administration are undertaking for the improvements of uh, the Pagoda.
Okay, Stan, thank you. Any comments or questions? Uh, we'll go with Strat and then.
Yeah, let's go around.
Stan, this.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman. Listen, can you explain to me what the parking lot consists of, consists of up there? Where is this parking lot?
The parking lot now is, if, if you're coming up Duray Drive and you come to the island, the parking lot is on the other side of the island. Um, there's a, there is, I believe there's fourteen parking spots that are parallel. Uh, then there are two ADA. What we're doing is we're increasing the ADA and um, widening the road a little bit more for um, for better parking, not necessarily more uh, unregulated parking spot, but better cleaner parking.
Okay, thank you, Stan.
Yes, sir.
I, I read in the background info that there will be an installation of three gates?
Yes.
Now, are we still paying for security guards at the Pagoda? Do we still have those in place? Or is that going to be a coordinated effort? Or these are just three gates that all, are they going to be like? I don't know. Is somebody manually lifting them and putting them down? Are they electrical?
No, that's, that is correct, Jhoni. The um, the gates are manual. They will be um, raised and lowered at dawn and dusk. Uh, the police department has offered to be that uh, gatekeeper, if you will. Number one. Number two, your question in terms of the security, the security guards too, do go up to the Pagoda. However, they also patrol some of our other parks as well. Um.
Which parks?
Everyone.
Yeah.
Um, um, I, I know one thing is nice is now we don't have the, the problem as much as River Park, but Riverfront Park, but.
Any other comments? Marcia and then Lucine.
Yeah, mine's just a real quick question. So I see a word of contract is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for gates to close the lot in addition to construction that you mentioned, Stan, of.
That is correct. It's construction.
Area.
Correct. The construction is the major part. The gates are, um, will be installed at the end.
Okay, that seems very reasonable for.
Yeah, we were very happy.
Yes, really reasonable.
Great job.
Yeah.
Marcia?
Okay, and first of all, thank you Stan for moving this forward. There was been a lot of discussion and public awareness of the situation and when you look at the narrow space that the road that goes, uh, around the Pagoda, there is barely enough room to back out your car out of those spaces for a road that comes off the Skyline Drive. So to me, beyond all our safety concerns, this was a logical conclusion to how to better route the traffic and was also a better solution than removing the island, which was floated out there a long time ago. That being said, I think it's important for the public to understand the scope and the timeline for the services because a lot of people use that very frequently. So in any way that we can't be promoting this through a press release, with the visuals, it would be great to have the visuals on this website and anyway that we can work together with local media. It's just really important to have people understand. And as you said, Stan, this is just the first phase. I think we'll have a discussion about the Pagoda next week. It's just one of the first phases of the projects that need to be done to a hundred and ten-year-old structure and area. So it's exciting what will happen in the future when this is done, but we just need to take it step by step.
Thank you, Marcia. I will, I will make sure that, um, I speak with administration and work tightly with their guys and with Christian to, um, put out the information. Give plenty of notice prior to the work being started and also show people what we are doing.
And just to follow up, uh, the plan I had seen, uh, when you presented it, uh, to the foundation meeting, you are removing that one small, uh, triangular island as you come up off of Duray Drive.
That is correct.
You're good. You have the picture. That's great.
Jamar, thank you. Thank you for sharing your thought tomorrow. Yeah, that island will be eliminated, correct.
All those skid marks.
Yeah, you, you see Willy marks if you look up there, people just go around in circles. It's really very concerning.
Alright, well, thank you, Stan. Um, it's unfortunate that we have to spend.
I have a good question.
Go ahead.
Once they do start, um, do they, do they give a timeframe of how long everything is gonna take?
How long will the project take, Stan?
We've had some, some guesstimates on our side. Three to four weeks at the most. It's not a major project. The most is going to be milling and then, then the repaving itself. But, uh, we wanna make sure we do it correctly and because if you see all the rainstorms we're having now, we just wanna make sure we do it right. Uh, the, the, the key component of this is traffic control and people are on Duray Drive. We wanna make sure that, um, that the traffic is correctly, um, flagged, if you will. So three to four weeks at the most.
Okay, go ahead, Johnny.
This is just one last comment. Both items, both award of contracts, are these part of our capital improvement projects?
The first one is, I'm assuming the second one is.
That is correct. Both of them, along with the state body also is part of the CIP, working with Jamar on that. That is correct.
Thank you.
So again, I think it's unfortunate that we have to spend a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars up there, um, to deal with this problem. The administration and council are committed to the tranquility for the neighbors that do live up near our Pagoda. So we hope everyone understands it's, it's been a lot of trial and error and this may not be the final solution, but it's a very important one and trying to bring some peace.
Jeff, I said, alright, I misunderstood. I think the other municipalities that are surrounding the Pagoda should also.
Well, it's a deeper discussion, but till we got through that, we need to solve the problem for now.
I thought, I mean, I saw that they're, they're working also on Skyline Drive signage. Do we post signs like on fines when people don't abide by the, the park hours or?
We have up there.
Signs of, you know, closed between.
For fines, like if you violate, if you don't follow this rule, you get fined extra money, I guess.
Yeah, there's been a lot of signs posted specifically to the Pagoda, yeah.
Jeff, can I just say one thing? When we, when we take these up, this will create the kind of park environment people are, have been talking about, at least from a definition standpoint. Because if you look at the county parks, they're all, they all have manual gates that are closed at dusk, opened at dawn, and it works real well. Doesn't mean there aren't some problems here and there, but it really has mitigated problems in those parks. Hopefully, I agree with everyone here that that money is not nearly as much as what I would have expected.
Right.
And money, all the money that we have to spend in the city for different things, this will pay off in terms of the tranquility of safety and all those kind of things. And again, it, it works in tandem with all the county parks. So hopefully it will, it will help things along the way, as well as safety and building.
Go ahead, Marcia.
And just a question that had come up about the gates. If you, uh, earn, there's a lot of gated at all parks. Uh, Edelman's Park's gated off, all fields gated off, so it's unusual for the. Yeah, it's not unusual for the police or security to come up through there. And I think it's also good that unfortunate gentleman that fell into that cistern, that wouldn't have been found out if the police hadn't been regularly going up through that area. So I think it's important that they have their, as near as up on the mountain, just so we know unfortunate things might happen.
Alright, any other comments? Okay, thank you, Stan. And then the next item under the consent agenda is a resolution appointing Don Reed as the council representative to the American 250 PA Brooks County Commission. Everybody's in support of that?
Yes, I'm sure you want to do it.
Yeah. It'll bring me full circle to when I cover the bicentennial.
Alright, and then the follow-up item is a resolution authorizing the purchase of one state body with chassis. Parks Division, uh, for in the amount of eighty-five thousand thirty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Any comments or questions on that resolution as well? Okay, we're gonna move on to the administrative report this evening. We have Stan, Frank and A here. We have our auditor from the auditors' report. We're gonna have a brief report. The electrician's examination board, about, gonna be here for that? Alright, then we'll move on to ordinances for final passage. The first ordinance is amending the city code by adding a new chapter, fourth thirty-three, public art and to establish a process for the city to consider public art projects that will effectively enliven neighborhoods and create outcomes such as safety, durability, walkability, health and economic development in city neighborhoods.
We'll be tabling this again, Jeff.
We're gonna be tabling this again. Alright, so that's gonna get tabled. Alright, so the next.
There's, we're, the administration, I hope that we would wait for Stan to to give some kind of downtown update, just to respect their feelings about it. Linda did a great job of brief. I, frankly, I would like to go forward and just move on it because it doesn't involve fine arts. It doesn't, you know, separate apart from the old fine arts board and everything else, I think there's still a lot of questions about the delineation of things and, um, again, to me, it seemed like a fairly simple endeavor that we could have taken care of, but I respect everyone's, everyone's questions, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping, and I hope everybody reads Linda's brief, and she did, she did a great job on this. You know, we, we don't want to be exclusive of anyone, but at the same time, if you look at how monuments group has worked and how they, they ask people for advisories in certain respects of some of the monuments and walkways, things like that, you do have people around the weekend who have heard advice, you know, and still go forward on that. But again, it's about everybody's.
And I just wanted to put on America, Donna and I had a conversation. I spoke very strongly, rather than just an advisory opinion, when you're talking about public art, I think you need to have someone that's serving as a regular member that has art expertise. So I'm recommending that a person from Burke's Arts be at it. And I'm gonna be really, very, uh, firm about that point of view because I understand that when you look at the people that are comprising this, they're people from the city that, they're all well-meaning, but they don't have that arts perception. Linda, would you please let me finish? Thank you. I, we appreciate your hard work and I understand it, but this is coming from looking at all the different interpretations and the Burke's Arts, formerly the Burke's Arts Council, is a publicly funded art entity, which has the expertise to look at different forms of art. And I, at least if they're not a voting member, at least have them be in there, uh, on a regular advisory capacity. And if anyone else can suggest anyone else from the arts, have them as a, a go-to person.
And again, I don't want to spin anybody, so we look at God awards, we look at independent artists, we look, you know, I, I really go strongly, the advisory capacity is, is fine.
Alright, there's so, Johnny, go ahead.
I, 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 and I, I don't know if I asked this before and if I got a clear answer, but, um, arts commission, I know there was conversation within the community, community members about, maybe there needs to be an arts commission that oversees everything.
And that was tied to development.
Okay.
And I think as we see sort of a renaissance in development and redevelopment downtown, we could look back at the, the ordinance that created that fine arts commission.
Okay.
And should we, should we look at that one percent coming in for public fine art? And then again, it's different and separate from place making.
And keep it, Jeff, not fine, it's just arts commission because arts is so many.
Exactly, yeah.
And then I, I, I wonder if Stan and then advises on if there's a need for a commission that then will oversee this more.
Okay. You know, I'm not sure. Frankly, frankly, I would rather it just go.
Okay.
Because I don't necessarily see that.
But from this body and this experience, you feel it's worth, are the arts, arts commission is worth reviewing, revisiting?
I think fine arts, I think. What the fine arts commission did is, Jeff, is very much separate from placement. It's very much separate. Fine arts, think of the Harry Vertoya sculptures, um, near the Seventh and, and, and parking, Seventh, Seventh and parking lot. The Shogun and on Center Avenue at the ornaments, um, the large, the large sculptures downtown along the riverfront. All those are because of a one percent levy that was placed on their developers to contribute independent, freestanding fine arts to the community. It's separate and apart from the murals and, um, the, the piano keys on Sixth Center, separate and apart from the old go lights and the drama and comedy, uh, lights on the, light posts on, on. So there's a difference between place making and fine arts.
Right, and I guess I'm saying like keep in general, so it encompasses all arts, so not just legalistic type of art, do that make sense? I don't know.
I, I don't know. I think it would get too complex, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be putting like a one percent percent on place making. But you may even look at developers who are redeveloping or building new to put that one percent, which actually worked relatively well to, started collapsing on itself and there were other, there were other circumstances.
Yeah, I, I would like to be able to look at some other models, like, uh, what's worked in Philadelphia because they have a multitude of different kinds across the, and Donna's right, there is a definite difference between what this ordinance wants and I really wish we could just put what happened with the fine arts, how that finally imploded in the end. Just didn't happen the way it needed to be, okay, and there's history to that.
But it doesn't mean a new one.
Exactly, and I, so I would rather look at moving forward and coming up with some ideas. When you look at, uh, Philadelphia, it's very, uh, much an urban environment. That Philadelphia is actually like a lot of red and split together into one big thing. What they would do, uh, the word fine arts, to me, I don't know if you're gonna get comfortable with this, all different kinds of arts. So maybe you need to use some different language here, but again, I'd like.
It's not complicated, like, because people wanna go forward, they'd like to do this.
Could you let me finish, John? Thank you.
Anytime.
Okay, uh, I just wanna be able to look at who our local experts are. And you're right, there are a lot of different organizations and be able to say, how can they come together and help us to brainstorm, how this will work the best? And it may be, take a little more time. I'm not talking about this ordinance, so I'm talking about moving forward with the idea of an arts commission. And in fact, I'm aware it has to come, there is a parallel process occurring at this point and maybe we want more detail to be aware of, that maybe won't impact on this ordinance, but still is occurring, that we can talk about once we have more details.
Well, I, you know, I think this would be a good project for the youth commission. What are, what are their thoughts? I know we don't have to hold up any ordinance. Yeah, but, 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 but let me finish, but to move forward from what they feel from a future art board might look like. Fine arts board is the one arts commission. To me, everybody's an artist. I, you can get into opinions about art. We're all artists. Some of us call ourselves artists. I don't, but some of us do and some of us don't. So, you know, the who and the what is really, you know, subjective, if you will, but yeah, this would be a good opportunity, Lucine, I'm looking towards you, because this is something we can formulate over time. Not holding up the current effort at all, but, but give them some, because they're the future. They're the ones that are gonna have to look at whatever gets placed.
That's true.
Wherever, so.
So Jeff, I agree that our youth commission has already addressed this in one of their meetings. I think this is something that they, they would like to start working, um, on certain projects. This could very much be one of them. And they bring a, a, a great perspective and insight, especially since, you know, maybe some of our stewards or caretakers of some products or areas or parks or public art displays, um, may not be able or willing or aging out from, from the ability to do that. So then who steps into that role? I agree a hundred percent that we should look at supporting an overarching arts commission. Because what I don't wanna see is further fracturing or siloing of all the entities and all of the energies and all the resources that we can bring together. Not defining what kind of art, um, but the ability to embrace and support all the art, which is what I'm hearing. And I think a commission taxed, you know, giving it one percent, whether it's fine arts or a mural or anything, would be exemplary as a city to present to our, our creatives and in our community. So I think we do need to look at that overarching structure. Meanwhile, putting some pieces in to support what's happening. They're already doing it. If you saw, um, in the past couple of weeks, there's, um, you know, convening of creative place making forth, there's full-out painting and, and doing art, for doing it, whether or not an ordinance exists. And I just wanna put that out to our community. Thank you for doing that.
Can the ordinance?
So, you know, I, I think.
Is that, is that what you would say, Lucine?
Perhaps, perhaps, because what I don't wanna do is put out a law to interfere with what's already organically happening. But to put out a law.
But this is for the maintenance of it. Are the people there doing it, are they guaranteed to ma- maintain it?
Well, what they're doing right now is just creating.
Yeah.
So I think if we create a, a commission, then we feed that into supporting all of the arts and the organizations.
Okay, well, what I'm gonna do as of this point, I'm drawing this entirely guys, who you, everybody is the right to do.
But I think we gotta go. I think you put it on the table. I just started the momentum.
We do this because Bonnie and I were, were, were approached nicely by a group that wanted to do things. We made it more inclusive to expand it.
Right.
And now it didn't seem that it had to be this complex. And I think what we're doing is, the folks who came to us, they're obviously nobody doing, doing quite a while. I feel bad for them because they were really the catalyst for us.
Why can they not do anything? What's holding them back?
They're trying to do, they're trying to do a road with crosswalks.
Well, what is holding them back currently from being able to do it?
Hen, hen dog, yeah. Road regulate, this is why, why we have city involvement so that we can go through these regulations. It's not saying we don't like your design, it's terrible. No, if you wanna do this, that's great.
It's with the right way.
Work with the community.
Will that stop them from doing it?
They're trying to do it within, they came to us so they would do it the right way. And we expanded it because it shouldn't just be inclusive. So say someone in your neighborhood, one of elementary schools, they wanna do something on the crosswalks for the kids. That's colorful, that's bright, it's, it's cute, but to work with the city, with the proper entity so that it's not taking away from the crosswalk itself, from the, the regulations of what a crosswalk should be.
See, that's a one right there.
Being able to navigate.
But to make sure that the actual crosswalk si- symbols are there that need to be for traffic regulations. So that something would be more colorful added to it. So what we're trying, that's why the city folks come in here. To make sure that on visibility and following structures and following regulations. To make sure that on visibility and following structures and following regulations go in, that's why it's not.
So let's not table, I mean, let's table this.
It's not so heavy handed as people think it is, we're trying to be kind and, and let people do things. Still giving us a guarantee that maintenance occurs, that if the group that came to Johnny and me, if they did that crosswalk. They're saying, okay, we guaranteed we're going to maintain it. Or if they put a mural beside a building, that's, that's ve- that's visible from the street, whether it's private or public property. Yes, we put our efforts here and we're going to maintain it. So that's what we're looking at, it's not punitive, it's not censoring, it's nothing like that. It's just embrace everyone and let's do it the right way. And let's make sure the I's are dotted, T's are crossed, and W's are pulled.
So, I, I, I think what we're hearing is that this is really a temporary measure, until we get to a more broader solution, it, it's serving the need.
You can, you can view it that way.
So, so I don't know that we wanna make it the idea, you know, the fine arts board member, this member, that member. Let's just get something in place and work on the longer term solution, go ahead, Marcia.
And I just wanted to do a practical application, cause I think it's a good idea, but I also look at the experience I've had as a nonprofit. Interestingly enough, during murals and some of the other mural projects, and why you sometimes need someone with an artist's point of view. Uh, if you notice, the, the mural that uh. I was involved with was at Sixth and Franklin, if any of you guys can visualize that one. At the corner of Sixth and Franklin, when that was put up, it had to go through the planning commission in order to get approval. And one of the guarantees we gave was if it needs to be repaired, it would be, that has never happened, because it was done directly on parachute cloth. It was also another project, interestingly enough, done by the Goggle Works, that was put up, it's, uh, took the building at Fifth and Penn. It was done on wooden panels, that cracked from the time it was put up. And so I wanna make sure that as we're making these decisions, we have someone with the artistic background that understands. What type of product works the best for sustainability? And I'm not trying to make it complicated, I just don't wanna see a project go up, and we've seen that happen with some of the other murals. That been painted on the sides of the building and they fade after a short period of time. Well intended, very beautiful, when they're designed to go up, but they only last two years, so that's the only thing I'm asking for is to.
My understanding is that this specific ordinance is relative to artwork that will last two years or less.
Two years or less.
So how are we guaranteeing that it's gonna be maintained just by them signing a paper saying that it's gonna be maintained?
They have to show they have funding to do that.
Yeah, and this is artwork again, two years or less, so. It's like a good snowstorm.
So.
Go ahead, Johnny, so we can.
So. Follow up, so are we going to table it, or we're not gonna table it? And if we're tabling it, do we have a set date as to when we're, you know, when is Stan Tech gonna give us input?
Hey, hey, do you know when Stan Tech's gonna be available to, to provide that input? The administration asked, we hold on.
Uh, Stan Tech, Stan Tech meets every other Friday, and we also have a meeting scheduled with them. For Thursday with the council president, mayor, and myself, I'll be more than happy to follow up on that and get an answer.
Even if they can send us something in writing that we can look at, that would be fine, we can maybe act.
Yeah, and we're gonna ask them to join our meeting probably two weeks out for an update with Stan Tech as well, so it'd be a good time.
So maybe in two weeks, if people wanna keep it on that.
Yeah, that's keeping it on the table, and I think now that people know it's two years or less, we have a better understanding of what the objective is.
Yeah, Lynn, and I encourage everyone to read this, if she didn't really.
That, and see, it's art in itself, I'm not trying to be, but it's everything, we're all art. Okay, did you hear that coming down there? Finally, the second ordinance for this evening is amending administrative code section five dash two oh eight. Rules the procedure by defining a quorum and remote participation in meetings introduced July twelve regular meeting. And advertised on July nineteenth, Linda, you wanna give us again just a brief recap?
It defines a quorum as a member's consent and allows for telecommunications device. And participating in the telecommunications device. It also allows telecommunication for committee of the whole meetings and other types of hearings or get togethers. And it allows council to participate remotely for up to four regular business meetings a year. Unless one of the following reasons occurs, such as illness or disability, care for an ill child. Emergency, and, and weather, schedule conflicts, stuff like that.
Alright, so it's just defining kind of the hybrid approach, if you would, we don't know. You know, where the world goes from this point, so it's just putting some guidelines around it, so any comments on that, anybody? Alright. Did you go on that one, the next ordinance is?
The new public comment just expands the public comment parameters to allow citizens to send written public comment for regular meetings.
So relative to the previous ordinance, alright, so no comments on that one? Right, okay, then the next item is um. Bill fifty seven twenty twenty one establishing a new parking spot on the north side of the two hundredth Street to eliminate traffic concerns at the Ramcon Building. I had discussed this one pretty well last week, it's blocking their ability to do deliveries, et cetera, et cetera. I believe it's only two spaces that. Any comments or questions on that? Not, the next ordinance is fifty eight dash twenty twenty one. Directing the county board of elections to place a referendum on the twenty twenty one general election ballot to eliminate charter section. Eleven ten recall elected officials as the state Supreme Court has determined that local recall provisions. Are unconstitutional due to removal process from elected officials provided in the state constitution. Any comments or questions about that, that's pretty clean. The final ordinance this evening is directing the county board of elections. To place a referendum on the twenty twenty one general election ballot to amend charter section twelve oh four. Amendments by making the correct citation to state statute title fifty three. Subchapter D amendment of existing charter optional plan through the county board of elections. Introduced at July twelfth regular meeting, advertised on July nineteenth, and again, this directs uh. People on how to amend the charter through the county board of elections.
Correct.
Any comments on, on that specific ordinance? They're gonna go on the ballot, if we approve them.
Oh, thank you. Good luck.
So what was that?
He's getting to us here. Introduction to new ordinances, amending, the first one is a, amending the city code chapter twenty three. Words. Words in commission. Part twelve oh one, downtown revitalization, public private partnership, section twenty three dash two oh one authorization by replacing the. Fit the city running designated downtown coordinator. Any comments or questions on that?
Jeff, will you be giving us, this is an introduction of new ordinance, will you be giving us an update on the current status of the downtown revitalization P three?
Well, I know there's a meeting scheduled.
Is there a meeting scheduled?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think it's early August, so I was just thinking about what's that timeline? So they are trying to keep it, you know, um, alive and well, it's gonna play a bigger role as we get into the, hopefully play a bigger role as we get into the strategic plan. So, um, if you don't have that meeting information, let me know.
Well, it's just that we have, we have an update on it over six months.
Yeah, if anybody else needs it, that wants to listen in or participate, let me know. Um, Jo, honey, maybe you wanna join us as well, so just remind me if I don't.
I think, but usually it's the timeframe, it's like lunchtime, so.
You can bring me, you can bring us lunch.
That's fine.
And yet.
You know the issues, we're, everyone's having a staff, you're right.
I know, I know. Alright, the second ordinance is directing the Berks County Board of Elections. To place a referendum question before city voters on the twenty twenty one general election ballot. Which would amend the city running home charter by eliminating the requirement of the city's public work direct, public works director to be an engineer. So we're gonna introduce that tonight, I don't know if the discussion's been held.
I think it needs to be a discussion with the whole body and the administration.
Okay, so I think the last we left it off, you and Abe, we're gonna be talking at some point.
We haven't spoken since last.
Can you try to do that?
Didn't we talk about this?
Certainly.
Well, we talked about it, but Marsha was absent, we needed her.
We will.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was gonna say, we'll, we'll be happy to.
And, and what is the timeline in which we'll work on this?
Well, I suggest you do it the next week, so we can address it, if there's big issues, then next week's committee.
Does it need to be put on the ballot, what, by the second week in August?
Well, we've got a further day.
Right, Ron gave us a little bit more room, beginning of September.
Okay.
Well, let's be prepared to speak to it next week.
Yeah.
Great, yeah.
Alright. Okay, resolutions, the first one is making a three million dollar contribution to the convention center to assist with the capital needs for the convention center. And the Performing Arts Center, any comments or questions on that, everybody? Go ahead, Melissa.
I stand on my comments, I sent an email, basically um. Just that, like, there's nothing, I have nothing against them or anything personally, but I just feel like if we have this money. Why aren't we putting it into. Investing in our parks, playgrounds, baseball fields um. That need updating and just things that, you know, that make the city look good. And if we are, then why aren't we talking about it, like, where are we at with it, what are we doing?
Well, and I didn't, I, you and I talked on the phone and there were a number of questions in your email, they were good questions. The first thing we have to remember that, you know, Performing Arts Center, just like the Reading Phillies, bring a lot of revenue.
I understand that.
And commerce to the city, and we bring in out of the four hundred thousand a year revenue, just from the amusement tax alone. Not to mention local employment, et cetera, et cetera. So, in essence, you know, it does fuel our ability to keep up our parks and do all the things we're talking about. And then it just supports our local businesses, you know, at a very strong level. We already spent, in, in probably the last five to ten years, we, with the commuter tax, which is gonna be, goes away, we put more into our parks. Than we ever have, there's a lot of projects, and Stan could probably speak to them, that haven't gotten completely completed at this point, relevant to the parks. But, man, I'd be the first one to sit here and say, if we haven't funded our parks and et cetera, et cetera. You know, let's, we got other priorities, and I don't know that excluding. Center would be one of them, but, but, you know, those are good questions, I don't know that we can answer them all, but like the Schlegel's project. I know the administration leaned pretty heavily on that contractor once they started to see the ball dropping. The problem there is hard to switch, you know, switch drivers when you're halfway through a project. And I forget, you know, all the other elements, but we. You know, when this, when this ARP money came to light, I, you know, right away I thought the Reading Phillies and Performing Arts Center and, and, and the area. Because I knew they had suffered, there wasn't a whole lot of direct funding for institutions like that, and we were gonna be kind of the conduit. To get that supported, to the extent we support other entities, you know, I'm, I'm a believer that a lot of other funding supported a lot of the other entities. And then most, not, maybe not all, but most of the remaining funding will go to city needs. You know, so let's say if we only gave away six million, and it all came out of ARP, and I'm not saying it will or won't. You know, that's ten percent of the funding that we got, and then maybe another ten percent that goes to other entities. But, you know, I, I just think it's important that we understand the fact that the counties joined us in the Performing Arts Center. Is a big, you know, unifying project for us, the fact that the Reading Phillies have contributed three million and the county's contributed three million to the Reading Phillies project. Along with hopefully, the governor, we're pretty sure, we're hopeful, he's a big Reading Phillies fan, I mean a Phillies fan, so. We would think he would support it, I, I believe he will at the end of the day. You know, we're leveraging a lot of good things with the money, so it's not like we're the only ones pouring to men in the ground. And, you know, being left to stand alone, so a lot of others have contributed. So I think it's important when we look at that, when we can spend one dollar and leverage three or four. Or spend one dollar and leverage another dollar for each dollar, you know, it's advantageous for us, so. But I, I'm gonna ask that, you know, the administration, maybe not so much tonight, but next week, maybe Stan. Do a five to ten year footback and, and there's out on the playground, so everyone has an understanding of actually how much has been standard, he's been. Uh, and then, you know, other questions, Melissa as well, so continue with the questions, cause that's how you're gonna learn and understand what's going on, right?
Jeff, could I add something to that as well, simply because I, I, could I just add a little bit? Uh, first of all, yes, the counselor's questions were most appropriate, I appreciated her email and I, that's why I responded so quickly. But that, everybody should have received a copy of it. I have said from the very beginning that the mayor's top priorities are streets, sidewalks, parks and playgrounds. I have visited, I think, twenty six parks in the city and seen a current theme that we need, that the parks need some attention, it needs clearly. So, I've asked the rec commission, provide me estimates on swings, on safety equipment that belong in the parks as well. And, uh, blacktop for basketball, I'm waiting to get those, and we're in the process of getting them. Parks and playgrounds are important to the vitality of every community, including Redding's, and we take that role very seriously. So, when I have those estimates, I will share those with you. Uh, and in fact, that we're gonna share everything with you in terms of streets, sidewalks, parks, and playgrounds. I've said from the very beginning that this is generational, and we wanna make these investments right now, and those parks, playgrounds. You're gonna see them getting a lot of love at the mayor's direction.
Yeah, so thank you, and so, and our parks and playgrounds are highly used, as we all know, highly used, and somebody mentioned. The East Reading Pool is perhaps a possibility with some of this funding, might be something you wanna put on the list, Dave, um. For consideration, is the East Reading Pool.
Jeff and city itself, they contribute a lot to the parks.
They do, they do, so let's keep some, we're gonna go to Marsha, then we see.
Yeah, and I think one of the points to me that's important, when you look at the funding streams. And I think that what is missing from this resolution is where the money's coming from, which I think is absolutely critical. Because the ARP money can only be spent for certain types of expenses, and it may not, our parks and our playgrounds. Which dearly need work and may need to go to our capital projects rather than the ARP, and I, and I wanted to escape that, if you could speak to that?
Council president, if I could speak to that, please?
Yeah, well, before you do, we, we, we did speak to this last time, and you weren't here, Marsha, i- i- it could come from either capital improvement, it could come from fund balance, it could come from ARP. We are not deciding that tonight, we're just deciding the committee, but go ahead, Jamal.
So, yeah, exactly what you just said, council president, um, at this current juncture, it's better to be vague. Um, we can make the financial commitment, and we could determine the resource allocation at a much later date. Once we have the firm numbers from PFM on how much our bucket is for revenue reimbursement. How much our bucket is for eligibility under the four categories of the rescue plan. Then we'll better be able to determine which goes where and which we finance, whether it's this one or the R Phil's project. Or respectfully, I would submit to support what the managing director said, we can do both. The parks as well as the funding commitments.
Okay, so I think what would be most helpful is to be able to list all of our priority projects. And then be able to say, okay, this is coming out of this funding stream, this funding stream, or this one. So that we know that everything's covered by it, which I know you probably already been doing, I think we just need to see that in a more visual way. To be able to help us understand, because the way it comes to us is one project at a time, and then you decide that what the bigger picture looks like. As far as all the projects that are needed to be supported.
That'll be in the budget process, counselor.
Okay. Right, and in addition to that, I, I agree with what my fellow counselors are stating. Uh, it is as a fiduciary steward, it's challenging to make a decision today and tonight. Based on, you know, where is this money coming from, this money coming from capital. So I understand especially what Melissa's saying. Uh, but I think, you know, making the decision is based on fact, do we feel that we need to invest as a city in these things that have been proposed? Not necessarily where's the funding stream coming from and defining at this moment, however. I know that the administration is working on an action plan, um, you know, we are eager to see that when you are ready. Because that will help us better understand the financial roadmap of what coffers potentially are going to be allocated for these projects that we are approving. So I, I wanna be very clear to the public, we're not approving these projects a hundred percent dedicating or directing funds from ARBID to what we are approving. Um, and, and that our decision making process can't be one and the same there. So we make this decision tonight as it stands, whether or not we want to invest as a city. Um, in what has been asked us, for us, for the convention center, and for the performing arts, and the.
So, both requests, one, the one we approved that allowed me to the stadium, and this request were very specific, right? Because it was, I mean, they were, these entities. Because it was, I mean, they were, these entities were affected by COVID. I don't understand why is it that we can't make the allocation and, and have the, you know, like, we should be confirming that this one is coming from ARPA, because it is COVID related. And I think in one of the categories, a um, like, we would be in compliance, I think is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And then my other concern as well, we're gonna have a multitude of entities requesting. So I know that administration is working on a plan, but we need to really start identifying how much are we gonna allocate for these type of projects in our city and our community, because obviously everyone, in some way, shape, or form, was affected by COVID, right? Because ARPA was very specific, it's COVID related.
Yeah, so I, I've asked Linda to add to committee the whole meeting, an ARP update with the administration, I think a week or two out. So we can continue the ongoing dialogue, as we talked about, at least once or twice, and so we can get an understanding of where they are, okay? We're gonna start seeing them formulate ideas, and one of the things I heard again in the last week is the East Reading Pool. So I want to have an opportunity in that meeting, not tonight, but to discuss that as something they might be able to get on that list. So we're gonna see more and more of this develop. Uh, as it relates to the funds, we know that the city's gonna get some relief in its capital improvement budget just by the receipt of the ARP funds. We're probably gonna see some general refund, general fund, you know, maybe a little bit, not much. So we know absorbing three million dollars is gonna be something we're gonna be able to do, okay? We, just from a general consensus standpoint, understanding of our numbers in the whole. Hopefully, I, these projects qualify for ARPA, I think that they probably will, they suffered pretty deeply during that time, because there was no activity, so. And I think some of those monies were meant for organizations like that, who didn't have, you know, some of these other plans in place, and other businesses did, and, and they need that kind of support. Are there a few others out there? Maybe, but not as many that have kind of their role. So I'm not as worried as the finance kind of overview here from specifying the funds tonight. I know the money's available, we have enough money in our fund balance, we have a pretty flexible capital improvement plan. It's probably gonna get some relief just by the receipt of those, those ARPA monies. So we know, so it's a matter of waiting for the puzzle, the puzzle to settle a little bit. Once we get further into the ARPA, we'll have a better idea of, of where this three million should come from, where this should come from. It's not that we don't have it, but to pinpoint it tonight will be challenging, okay?
Yeah, and if I may, yeah, it just makes me, you know, nervous, right? Because we, we are fiduciary, we have fiduciary responsibility, so.
Yeah.
I always like to be clear, okay, we're voting on this, and we know that the money's coming from this line item or what have you. That's all, I just always like to be very clear.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's one of these things where every year we, we adjust dials, and these dials, we're gonna need to adjust them, but we don't know which ones to adjust at, at this point, but we know there's enough money there. So it, it's just one of those things, I agree with everyone, I'd rather know, but, you know, this, this art process is something still being developed and understood, et cetera, et cetera, so to put, you know, a line on it at this point is, at best risky, go ahead.
And just to make a clarification, this is just a resolution, so if any further transfer of funds occurs, another action will need to be taken.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. No money is being moved yet, but this is just saying, we support it, we want to get behind them. I think it's important that we send that message. Again, we want to thank the county on both these projects. To, yeah, for, for being a partner and making this happen. Any other comments from anybody on this resolution? I didn't cut anybody off, did I? All right. I've done that. All right, two resolutions we can do together, first one is appointing Mike McDevitt to Harv, and also appointing Emma Gottlieb to the State Trade Commission, right? Okay, um, before we adjourn, take a five-minute break, is there anything extremely urgent for public discussion?
You wanted to speak about the priority summit?
Oh, yeah, we have a priority summit, I'm gonna ask everybody, so August seventh, eighth seems like a, a fine time for everybody. Um, what did we say, ten o'clock?
Correct.
That is Saturday.
It's a Saturday.
End of noon, yes.
Saturday, so we'd like to set up for ten o'clock, um, if there's issues, topics specific, I'm gonna work on a draft with Linda and make, but I, Linda, first, we want to gather from everybody what you want to see on the agenda, what you would like to be discussed, and then we'll run it by you, and then we'll finalize it, is that fair? Something we lost it. Go ahead, Johnny.
Just something, is there an opportunity to join remotely?
Uh, I don't know.
Yeah, we can accommodate that, sure, we'll accommodate that.
If there's an opportunity to join remotely, then.
All right, so Abe, we were saying we would, uh, we would work with you on the draft agenda, is that fair?
Oh, sure, yes, I thought you were directing that to council members, but yes, that's fair.
Yeah, they're gonna, everybody's gonna share their thoughts and ideas, and Linda will compile it, we'll put it together, and then we'll go with you and get your input as well. All right. Um, anything else urgent, go ahead, Lucy.
Well, I've noticed there are people convening in the hallway, and I'm concerned about who and why, and are we being very clear about our meeting protocol?
No, it's not IT, it's uh, East Reading resident, District Two resident, yeah.
What's, what's the?
He wanted to observe the conversation about parking meters.
Oh, that's already taken place?
Yes, I think the parking permit that is useless.
All right, no, we're not, we're not having a discussion now.
Council president, my concern is that we're not being clear about what the parameters are for us, how we convene in person.
I thought they were IT.
I don't know.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to.
Did you invite her, did you invite her in?
No.
No, yeah, let me have, so, yes, sir, I apologize. This meeting isn't open for the public, uh, it's just council members.
On, on site, it is.
What's that?
On site, it's not the public, it is.
Yeah, it's not.
I called, they said it was, I called City Hall, they said it was open right now.
Well, I don't know if he's called, right? They gave you all information.
No, they told, I told specifically.
Well, I'm, I'm just letting you know now that you can't participate, um, it's actually, uh.
That's fine, just, again, I want to know status of our parking permit that is totally useless, Marshall's very aware of it.
Okay, so we'll get the information to Nathan, did you have his number?
It's more complicated than that, Jeff, and I, okay, and I will speak to the gentleman before the meeting, that I understand what his concern is.
So you have next steps in order?
Not at this point.
Okay, so Marshall's gonna have to get back to you, but we can't participate in any further discussions, Lucy. I appreciate your, appreciate your help, go ahead.
But to Lucy's point, though, I think we want to make it clear as to how the public can be engaged and participate. They may not be able to come in person at this time, but they could totally, you know.
You can sign up for public comments.
It's been a, a year in the making.
And also, is he able to speak at our public meeting, which is right after this?
He could if he would have signed up appropriately, but, yeah, so we're not, we're not taking, I thought it was IT.
Just making sure.
I asked Linda to go see who was on, but I thought.
No, it's not IT.
And again, I, I just, I think that we need to be very clear as our practices and protocols for meetings, because we are still in, in what the pandemic.
Well, they're very clear, but he got better information.
He said somebody called, and they said it was open, so.
I can't control City Hall, yeah, that's for sure.
Yeah, they did not call our eyes.
But, but the message needs to be clear across all offices, all boards, all, you know, everywhere that somebody can see that it's not open for public attendance.
Okay, all right, is there some comment, something urgent?
Yes, well, urgent enough that I thought Johnny and I are the representatives to the sidewalk, sidewalk repair. And a bunch of emails went back and forth this week, and I really want to know that status of that. Those monies cannot be repurposed in any way, shape, or form. The application process was to be reviewed by committee, Jehani and I were council reps to that. Pre-COVID, it fell apart during COVID, we're not in COVID anymore. There are independent homeowners who are distressed, at risk, need those sidewalks repaired, schools, near busy areas. Um, it's time for that to be revamped, Jehani, I don't know how you feel, but I feel strongly, I want, I want action on that. And it was only the serendipity of, of someone from Marshall's district contacting Shelley, like, what's going on with this? That frankly, it came up, Jehani, I think he has some thoughts on too.
You know, because we also had engaged even abilities in motion group, C four physically disabled. So I think like an update status, what is the plan, what's the goal for the sidewalk repair?
So Abe, is there a chance?
Of course, of course, first of all, we learned about this, there'll be an email on Thursday, and the money has not been repurposed, it's staying in the account as it should. It's gonna be used accordingly, I understand that this goes back to twenty eighteen, the previous administration. We're gonna hold an internal meeting this week, and I'm just gonna ask if council would be kind enough to indulge us in providing it not at the August second meeting, but on the ninth, to give us just a little more time. But that's entirely your decision, we're just asking politely if that would be accurate.
What are you asking for, Abe, on the night?
We could present, if we could present on the ninth instead of the second.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
And Abe, if you could send out a reminder to all City Hall staff, the council meetings are closed in person, but available to register via the city clerk's office, if somebody wants to participate. Um, if you could just make an announcement, if anyone inquires about attending a city council meeting, they should contact Linda's office.
Certainly, happy to do that.
Newspapers like that.
Yeah, I know, we're not gonna control, had I known that wasn't an IT, they would have been going.
And also, can we have the doors locked, because people are coming in? I mean, I understand, if I was coming in, I, I'd be coming straight upstairs, but the doors are locked or, or open at least on the Eighth Street side to easily walk in after five o'clock, those doors should probably be locked. Request admission, I'm asking that to the administration, I'm asking that to the administration.
Yeah, if you can, if we can make sure the doors are locked, that would be helpful.
Sure, I'll take that as well.
Anything urgent?
I just wanted to be fair to that gentleman, he saw, he's had parking issues for quite a while, so on the agenda, something to do with parking, was able to get in the building, as we know that they aren't locked, and thought that he could be able to participate in the meeting.
Uh, you said you were contacting IT, I thought that was. All right, so otherwise I would have told them we leave the meeting.
Yeah, we just have to be careful, this last time, we have someone here who leaves early, so it's.
Uh, we're gonna regroup in five minutes, everybody should sign on at twenty after, we're gonna start at twenty two after, if that's.